Words prayer and pledge of allegiance. Our Father.
Who art in heaven, thou wilt be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item D on the agenda is approval of minutes from the council meeting we had on February 6th, 2023. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved.
It's called name dropping. I guess I just saw my name, yep.
Okay, item E on the agenda is citizen communication. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council for anything that is not on the agenda, you can step up to the podium there. And if you are on WebEx, we will check the chat periodically throughout the meeting. We're gonna change up the order a little bit here today. We're gonna go to move to item K2, discussion or action to approve the municipal court to apply for technology and security grant.
Yeah, Council President, I have invited Judge Schuler here this evening. As I believe you are aware, there was an audit that took place, a safety audit from the Ohio Supreme Court last fall. And she's received the findings of that audit. And now there's some grant money out there available that she would like to apply for. And she's here to ask for your blessings to move forward with that grant.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. This is an audit that we have talked about, I think, a couple of different times when I was here in the fall. We were at one point waiting to get the Supreme Court audit people out to the court. They came out in October. I think the last time I was here, they had come, but we were waiting on the report. Report came in January, okay? And I think Mr. Small has forwarded that audit on to you, various findings and recommendations that they're asking for. One of the primary reasons that I asked for the audit was because I want to apply for this grant to hopefully pay for, you know, at the time, I didn't obviously know all the things that they were going to recommend and suggest. But that's my goal. The physical things that they're suggesting, the metal detector, the blast proof glass, the bollards, those are all things that we're getting estimates on. The grant just opened up. It closes March 10th. So we have a rough draft of the language ready to go, collecting their estimates. That grant will be awarded in May. So hopefully, that's my goal, is to get some of these things that, hopefully, all the things that they are recommending paid for through grant funds.
You'd say this could be 100%?
It could be. It just, the last time that the court applied for the grant, they apparently applied for technology. It's a technology security type grant. So we've never applied, as far as I know, for security purposes. So I'm hoping that utilizing, you know, the Supreme Court input here and being able to say, look, these are not just things that, you know, I willy-nilly want. These are things that the Supreme Court audit people are suggesting that we have. But that will bolster our ability to get, you know, funds for these security items.
Now, if we didn't get the funding, the grant, or maybe a portion, would you be able to choose which items you do and which ones you don't do?
We'd have to go back and look at that, you know, depending on how much, you know, if they give us a portion, if they give us, give all of it, you know, we'd have to go back and look at that. You know, the concrete bollards, for instance, you know, they're looking at redoing the sidewalks, the pillars and all of that out there this year. The pavement, I think, the following year. So I've already been in communication with Tracy Bush at the EMA because my thought process would be, you know, get the estimate now, have the engineering, maybe include that in the estimate now because having to go back after they submit the estimate, it's gonna be more costly. So I'm working with Tracy to try to get me a quote on that, that sort of stuff. So I have a real good grant writer on staff. So she's successfully gotten, and we've kept a lot of those probation grants. So I'm hoping that we can get 100% of the funding that we're asking for.
That would be great.
I know I provided a link in the council packet. I'm not sure if any of you were able to go to that link and look at the, it was over 40 pages, the result, the audit. So I didn't think it was going to be something I wanted to add to the electronic packet. So if you're interested in it, I can certainly email it to you or forward it to you. So I will, matter of fact, I will do that.
I mean, they gave me electronically.
I have a beautiful copy.
And then these nice booklets on various policies, manuals, security, you know, and then the physical things that they think that we ought to have. And, you know, the concrete bollards, so can't drive a car through the court was one of them. Blast proof glass was another one. Metal detector, x-ray machine, which, you know, the glass and the metal detector, I was pretty sure that they were going to, was one of the things, two of the things that they were gonna ask or suggest that we have. So the other, the other things are, you know, various policies and manuals, security committee, things like that, which we can, we can accommodate that. We can, we can have those documents.
Well, it sounds like these are important things for security purposes. And if we can get it paid for, for free, then we might as well try.
Free, right? Free's good.
So Billy, do we just need a motion to approve today?
Yeah.
Nothing else, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Joe.
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved. All right. Thank you. All right, we'll go back to item F, reports from city council committees. F1, the electric committee did not meet on February 23rd, 2020, or I'm sorry, February 13th, 2023, due to lack of agenda items. F1, the, or F2, the water and sewer refuse recycling and litter committee did not meet on February 13th, 2023, due to lack of agenda items. F3, the municipal property, building, land use and economic development did not meet on February 13th, 2023, due to lack of agenda items. And F4, the parks and rec committee did not meet on February 20th, 2023, due to lack of agenda items. Item H, introductions of new ordinances and resolutions. And we have, H1 is resolution number 005-23, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $50,000 for the purpose of purchasing cardiac monitors and all of their necessary pertinences for the city of Napoleon Fire Department and to award said purchase to Stryker Sales Corporation and declaring an emergency. Motion.
Second.
Yes, Council President, this piece of legislation allows us to buy three new cardiac monitor defibrillators, which would replace three units that are currently in the field. It's a single source contract with the vendor that has provided these for a number of years. And it's important that we maintain some commonality in the units. And the total cost of this is $88,852. And that includes the trade-in value of the three units. Acting Chief Joel Frye is here to discuss it further. If you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions, comments? I know you guys shared some information with us before, so I'm good with it.
What was that amount again, Andy? With, including the trade-in, it was $88,852.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
All right, that would, we'll be moving on to second read. Item H2, ordinance number 006-23, an ordinance creating the non-bargaining position of Parks and Rec Facility Manager for the city of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Motion. Okay, Andy.
Yes, Council President, as this was discussed and came out of committee and has been discussed here in the past prior to the legislation being created, this creates a Park and Rec Facilities Manager position. This position will manage the Aquatic Center as well as the Golf Course Clubhouse during the season and act as a program manager for the other recreation programs. I won't necessarily say off-season because it'll be year-round that they'll be doing that as well. But that's another part of their functions in the off-season. It'll be a flexible schedule, obviously, depending upon the programming. This position can add to or grow some of the current rec programs to maximize the use of facilities. And as also discussed, can act as an assistant to the Parks and Rec Director to plan, for succession planning. Tony would have been here this evening, but he was out today. So I told him I would handle it. If you have any questions, if I can't answer them, I will certainly get an answer for you from Tony.
I remember the discussion. And I think that, I think we agreed it was pretty worthy position, a needed position. However, there's been some confusion about whether it was actually approved in the budget or not.
It was not, it was not part of the budget, the original budget. It had been discussed and it stayed in just as an extra item, but it was not budgeted for, for '23.
It's 100% funded, a partial rec fund, right?
Yes, sir.
Not general fund at all?
That's the plan. Straight out of the Parks and Rec Fund.
So is the, from what I understood, that a lot of the funding would come from extra revenue made from the pool and the golf course. Is there enough to sustain another person?
Kevin can answer to the, to the budget itself. But it's, the Parks and Rec budget is as healthy as it's ever been. And right now, it's planned on that being funded, the position being funded 100% from that position, or from that fund.
Yeah, the last couple of years, they certainly have increased their carryover balances. So I would feel comfortable to have this added at this time.
My two cents, I will likely vote no on this. Just to remain consistent, I think adding positions outside of that budget period is something that we should refrain from doing. It was heavily discussed and it sounds like it's a position that's needed. I appreciate the forethought given to that position, but at this point, I would vote no.
Council President, if I could add, this, this was a position that was discussed during the budgeting time period. And this was one of the items that was cut. And I'm not gonna advocate for either way, but just as a rule, because in our list of items at the tail end of the budget process, there was about five or six things that were cut. And my recollection is that this was cut, but bring it back at another time. So this must be the, the next time or the other time.
Any other questions or comments?
As far as like, I know that they want to bring this person on as like a succession plan. Are we going to fill the assistant position again? Or will it be looked at later down the road?
I don't know.
I would understand that this would be, if I could speak, I would understand that this position, while the succession plan would be there because our rec director, and actually, we budget for him to possibly retire. I can't speak for him to do that, but that could come at any time. And it could be five years from now. But I'm understanding that this position would remain. So if there was a succession plan. Part of the, the concern about this position or the need for this position is that the people that take care of the golf course currently, which do a wonderful job and been doing that for years, are a, are a year-by-year basis. You know, are they gonna come back next year or not? And with the increase in the usage of our pool, it would just make sense if we had somebody that oversaw both of those facilities on more of a full-time basis, basis that you knew that was gonna come back year in and year out. Not that we've had issues with how it has been done. I do know, like on the pool side, you know, we have kids, older kids, run the pool. And to have that cycling through, some of them do a great job, some of them do not-so-great a job. So this would solidify the overseeing of those positions.
Sounds like more consistency.
More consistency.
I just have one more question. I know that we compared to other communities and I cannot recall what communities we compared ourselves to that have an assistant. Do we remember who those were? I thought Brian was one. Tony said it, I think, at our meeting, but I can't remember which ones those were.
I don't recall that discussion, I'm sorry.
I didn't write it down, okay.
And our HR director said that this would, this position would may stay.
Okay.
Hopefully, your, your second rec, your facilities manager can provide you with programs too.
Yeah.
Then you, then you show a definitive need for, for two, right?
Right, that's why.
You know, when, if this is Tony's successor and person comes in and the council says we don't need this person, then you make the decision to not fill it, right? I think the plan is, though, to be so successful and have so many kids and so many programs, yeah, we absolutely have to have a second person.
And that's a good point, too, because I think it'd be good for programming-wise to get, not that parents are bad, but there's different parent volunteers for each program. And that's a lot of hands in the pot collecting money and distributing equipment. In my opinion, I think it would be consistent to have one person overseeing that. And maybe allow for outside residents to join our programming.
Right. Yeah, you're correct. And, and as Kevin said, you know, that pool's a wonderful resource and you have basically 16 to 22-year-old kids running that. They do a phenomenal job. But a lot of them, once they're through college, they're off and they're other, to another profession and they leave. And so this would maintain some of that consistency as well with one person overseeing the money handling of both the Golf Course Clubhouse and the Aquatic Center.
It was, it was my understanding this was going to be kind of a training position for Tony if he should decide to retire eventually. But I did, yes, I didn't realize that this was being talked at as a permanent position. I feel comfortable having it as somebody who would get the knowledge that, to make it run like Tony has, but actually creating another position, I, I don't know if I'm for that. A permanent, another permanent position.
That's what I mean. You, you leave it like this and then you, you see, right? When it comes to budget and then you don't fill it maybe, right away.
So Diane, who currently works part-time out there, she is over the pool and the golf course. And so she helps with the scheduling and then keeping the golf course running during the week. So she is trying to pull herself out. And so it would be replacing the part-time position she has plus the additional, so it would be a full-time. So it's almost like a half-person per se. So we already budget for her to be here. She's just not. So she would be taking, so whoever would be taking over her position as well? Pretty much, yeah. Okay, so it's not a full position creation, it's a half position. Pretty much, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Did you know if she's gonna continue for the rest of this calendar year? Do you know that's her plan?
I think if we need her to, she will. She's kind of in limbo right now. She hasn't really said yes or no. I just know she has, that's part of why Tony has brought this up is because she would like to be more of a snowbird and not be here.
Yeah, no, I know she's been a snowbird right now, so that's why I was asking, so. Any other questions, comments? Marissa, please call the roll.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Ross.
No.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
All right, that will be moving on to second read. Item H3, ordinance number 007-23, an ordinance amending ordinance number 077-22 regarding compensation of the city of Napoleon IT specialist and IT administrator positions for the year 2023 and declaring an emergency. Motion. Second, third. Okay, Andy.
Thank you, Council President. As you know, and as we've discussed, this was basically brought on by some private sector interest in our personnel. And it kind of forced us to do a little bit of studying on some wages for the, both, both the IT administrator and the IT specialist. And we looked at some other communities. And this will basically brings, bring us up closer to what those communities are offering to their IT, IT professionals, based on that study.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions or comments? Marissa, please call the roll.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Upstein.
Lori.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
All right, that will be moving on to second read. Item I, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have none. Item J, third readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance number 001-23, an ordinance allowing ODOT to work inside city limits for the state Route 108 roundabout project and declaring an emergency. Motion.
Second.
Item, Council President, there are no changes to this ordinance.
Is it still on schedule for this year?
It's on schedule for this year. When this year, I'm not exactly sure. I know Chad had been in some discussions with them just last week. And I think it will likely be July before that job is let, so. Still on, still on for this year.
Do we know how long that project is scheduled to last?
I do not know. We haven't talked about that.
Keaton mentioned it at last meeting.
It's a 60-day road closure, isn't it?
Yeah.
At least, yeah.
Sixty to ninety.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on third read. Item J2, resolution number 004-23, a resolution approving the execution of a schedule with the American Municipal Power Incorporated for the participation in the Community Energy Saving Smart Thermostat Program and declaring an emergency. Make a motion.
Second.
Andy.
Yeah, Council President, there are no changes to this resolution either. But I will just reiterate a little bit. This does allow the residents to sign up to have their smart thermostats controlled remotely. There's no minimum number of enrollees. It used to be 2% of the customers. That's no longer part of the program. It allows for peak shaving, four hours maximum, and up to 15 times per year. And again, that's to save on our peak load or transmission costs. There's no weekends or holidays unless it's an absolute emergency. The cost per thermostat to the city is $80 for the year. And then it's, initially, it's a five-year program. And AMP will be contracting with a company called Energy Hub for this program.
Are there any discounts for the thermostats that we can apply for?
I don't believe there are any discounts on the thermostats, but I think, as I read, there was actually a gift card or something for those that take part of it, part of it, of $50, I believe it was.
If you go through the efficiency smart website, there's a model that you could get that's basically offset. You would get refunded the amount right now. Doesn't mean it's gonna stay forever, but, or very little cost.
Does it have to be a specific model? Or can it be any type of?
I think there were a list of models, weren't there?
And it was pretty much all of them, wasn't it?
And the program provided $55 gift card from Energy Hub.
Okay.
So that would be automatic with enrollment.
But the city pays that fee of $80 that's paid every year per?
That is correct.
So every year, people that's on that, they'll pay $80 for each one.
The city will pay that $80 for each one that signs up. That is correct.
Okay.
I believe it's $8 per, per unit per month is what the cost would be. And I know this was asked a couple council meetings ago. Anyone wants out of the program, it's just a matter of getting out, we would no longer pay for it. And then they would, they would be free to be out. I was informed that it's no hassle.
I remember you saying that.
So if we pass this tonight, then what are the next steps? When will, how will we get notified as citizens or to be able to enroll?
Well, I think that would be up to on how we want to market it. Our next step is that we would get a hold of AMP and the, and the efficiency and the innovation, which would be Erin Miller, who gave the initial discussion point or PowerPoint. So we, we would just deal with, take her lead and see how, how she wanted us to do it.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other questions or comments? Can you, Marissa, please call the roll?
Ken.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
That has passed on third read. Thank you. Moving on to item K, good to the city. K1 is discussion or action, review or approve the power supply cost adjustment factor for February 2023, PSCAF, three-month average factor 0.02256 and JV2 0.109626. Andy?
Kevin, did you want to take this?
Sure, I could take this. So this is our, our factor that we're gonna put in place for this next upcoming month, for our billing cycle, much what I talked about at the end of last month's meeting or last, last meeting that we had. The severe storms that we had, the coldness in December 23rd, 24th, 25th. This certainly reflects all the issues and problems that we had with, with not just Napoleon, but the Midwest with energy issues. So this is why the amount is a little high for this time of year. But with our three-month rolling average, this will work itself out. So this, this actually number is comparable to July and August when we would have peak shaving days. So this is the first month of that, seeing that issue. I can just, to leap forward, the, the next month has already been calculated and it's gonna be a similar number as this. So, I mean, the, the formula is working. I asked for you guys to approve it. But it is a little on the higher end because of the storms that, that the Midwest had.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We need a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll. Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
That has been approved. Moving on to item K three, discussion or action, the PACE program.
As Council President, I had a, a call, WebEx call with Jennifer Arps from the CIC and Josh Strickland from the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority last week, or two weeks ago, and I invited Josh to speak tonight, and Jen, to speak tonight on the program that they offer, and it's another tool that we can utilize to help our businesses, current and future businesses with their energy efficiency. So it's, goes over and above just the electrical, it handles the full envelope for the buildings, and they'll speak on it more eloquently than I.
Well, yeah, I'm just going to come up here and just briefly discuss the CIC Economic Development, you know, we've worked with a lot of other organizations, the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority being one of those, and utilizing their tools and incentives that we can offer our businesses, and one of those lately has been with Thermaduct, which is the new owner of the former Walmart building, and some of the improvements that he is working on, obviously with that building, is energy efficiency and especially his HVAC units. So in discussing that with him, it also introduced me to Josh Strickland, who is with the PACE program and Better Buildings of Northwest Ohio with the Lucas County Port Authority. So we started discussing this program and how Fran, the owner of Thermaduct, can utilize that. Sounds like a great program, I'm sure you all will have questions, I know Kevin will probably have some questions as well, which is warranted before we move forward with this, but in my mind, I think it would be great to move forward with this as another incentive or tool in our toolbox that we can offer businesses, because as I was telling Josh, if we do move forward with something like this, there's a couple other projects that I'm working on that are smaller, that could benefit from this, that not necessarily some of my other incentives work with them, because obviously they, they have to be tied to job creation, and some of these projects are smaller and just strictly focusing on efficiency and small investments like that, so I'll let Josh talk about the program.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, I'm Josh Strickland with the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority, I'm our PACE administrator. PACE is an acronym that stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy, and that describes the repayment mechanism of a energy-saving building improvement loan program, financing windows and doors, LED lighting, a new roof, insulation, any permanently affixed building improvement can be financed with PACE financing. Back in two thousand ten, the Toledo Port received a Department of Energy grant that provided funds to house within the port's Northwest Ohio Bond Fund. The Northwest Ohio Bond Fund is the first established, highest credit rated bond fund in the state of Ohio, where we issue energy bonds to the private market, further lend those bond proceeds to individual PACE projects like Thermaduct. Our average PACE project size is anywhere from, our average project size is about four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. We can finance through the Northwest Ohio Bond Fund, projects as low as one hundred-thousand in project costs, and as high as eleven million in energy-saving building improvement costs. From that same Department of Energy grant, we also created a revolving loan fund of three million dollars, to again, provide the capital to fund PACE loans. Smaller loans anywhere from twenty-five thousand to one hundred-and-fifty thousand, shorter term length of five to ten years, as opposed to the Northwest Ohio Bond Fund, generally financing loans at a fifteen-year term, we can go to twenty or twenty-five for the appropriate project and the appropriate borrower. Back in two thousand ten, when the program was launched, Ohio revised code required that an energy special improvement district, which is the entity that is able to broach city council and ask that a special assessment is placed, municipalities were required to be contiguous to each other to join that energy special improvement district. As a, a couple years ago, municipalities within a contiguous county are now able to join an energy special improvement district. So with Fran's Thermaduct project, we are hopeful that the City of Napoleon would be welcoming to place a special assessment for the repayment of Fran's energy-saving building improvement loan, and join the Northwest Ohio Advanced Energy Improvement District. The only action the city council would take is approving a special assessment once the Toledo-Lucas County Port Authority approves the financing of an energy-saving building improvement loan. By joining the energy special improvement district, city council would be delegated one seat of, of the board of the Northwest Ohio Advanced Energy Improvement District, and, and hope that we can continue to expand into more than thirty-five municipalities that we've already financed projects with them. A little bit of the background of the program, to date, we have financed roughly one hundred-and-twenty individual PACE projects, issued eight energy bonds, average bond size maybe five to seven million, average projects financed with each issuance is roughly twelve. We financed another, call it forty revolving loan fund loans through the program. So with that, I'd love to field any questions that you might have, or?
So Jen, you see this as an economic development tool, right, to help existing people do stuff that they, they don't want to finance through their bank, or just another way to do it?
Absolutely, especially with, as we all know, a lot of our buildings in the city are getting older and aging, so they need these improvements. Like I said, I've met with several that I won't name, but I probably have at least four that I'm working with, talking about their needs to do improvements, and I think this is something that they'd be able to use, because like I said, any of our state programs, of course, there'd be job creation tied to it, or your investment size. For one instance that I might be able to think of, maybe not so much for the energy, but other uses to the port within Big B Coffee, we couldn't provide her with the revolving loan funds because of the project, but I think she would have been able to use this because of going through the Port Authority, they have more access to fund her.
And so what we got to do is, as a city council, we have to say it's okay for the PACE program to be here in Napoleon, and how long is it supposed to, how, if we say yes, how long are you staying?
All right, we, over the last twelve years, we've developed a wonderful closing package with Braker and Eckler, they are the PACE experts of Ohio. Essentially, the, the approval of a petition to increase the property tax bill on behalf of one of our PACE borrowers would include you within our district. Included in our loan closing package comes a special assessment agreement, just like all other special assessments, a property owner would pay the county, the county would remit that special assessment to the municipality, the special assessment agreement identifies that special assessment, and the city agrees to remit that to the PACE lender. So as long as there is an active PACE loan, we would.
Stay, you're staying, okay. Does that make sense, Finance Director?
Yeah, I just had a couple questions about that, is, is, so, we, we would have to counsel it to approve the energy special improvement district to be a part of that? Is that what they would have to approve, because we're not a part of that district now?
Yeah, our legislation that's provided by Braker and Eckler would both place the special assessment and approve the joining of the energy specialist improvement district all in one set of legislation.
So we would have to approve, like we do now, about at the end of the year, we approve the special assessments for like nuisances, for the north side substation, or the, you had the south side water line, you had assessments for that, we would also approve these type of assessments. What, what are the City of Napoleon's risk if somebody doesn't pay the set assessments?
I'm not an attorney, but my understanding is none, I can get you a formal answer if you'd like, but the City of Napoleon is not the lender in the transaction, the Northwest Ohio Advanced Energy Improvement District is the lender. If the, if Henry County isn't paid, then.
We're not, the city's not going to get a bill if, if they're not paid there?
No, we will, we will send an invoice to the city, if the city did not receive the special assessment from the county, then the city just really does not pay that invoice.
Because that would, that would be some of what of our risk, if you have an owner that?
Does pay.
That walks away, doesn't pay, then, as long as we're not responsible for that debt.
Yeah.
I think, but I, I would have to be very clear on that.
Assessment gets paid to the county from the owner, and then the county transfers that to the city.
Along, right, along with the normal special assessment.
Yeah, but the, but the case, the severe case of that would be is if it goes in front of like a sheriff's sale or something like it, and you get pennies on the dollars and the assessments, and the back taxes get wiped out.
That's part of the risk.
You're not, you're not sending us a bill for that remaining mark that's still owed.
Correct.
That's your risk, like a default loan, or with that. Are we allowed to take, it, it is work on our part to do, are we allowed to have an admin fee with that?
We, so the program was developed in the spirit of economic development, and I want to be very clear that the, the only kind of interaction that we have with the municipalities that we do offer PACE financing in is twofold. When a new project comes up, we brush city council and ask that they place a special assessment, and every semi-annual period when the county pays the municipality, the municipality turns around and cuts the check. So we haven't historically had an admin fee for a semi-annual check cut, but.
Is that something that could be negotiated or discussed? I mean, I know the county auditor takes a fee, and you guys make money, we use it as an economic development tool, which is fine, but that we ask that upfront, because there is work for us to do.
We have to cover our costs. Well, we've got costs involved.
But we also have economic development, I, I understand, but.
What, what's the benefit from it, yeah?
What's our benefit?
So I, I would say the benefit is to your constituents in that we are delivering a below-market financing tool to them. The Northwest Ohio Bond Fund is the highest credit rated bond fund in the state at A minus, we are further lending those bond proceeds at a below-market fixed interest rate to them.
What would be a?
For my, sorry, for my benefit would be that we have these business owners investing and utilizing the program to make those improvements in the buildings, so we're not stuck with a twenty-year-old former Walmart building, a former B and B building.
For twenty years.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I am proud that these businesses purchase these buildings and see the potential in them, and if we can offer something like this to help them along the way, I think that's, in my minds, that helps me.
Yeah, and I honestly, and I understand what you're saying, Kevin, but I think any fee that we would collect would be negligible relative to the potential benefit of any of these programs developing because of the use of this PACE program.
What would, what would your idea be, Kevin, a percentage, a straight dollar amount?
I mean, we really don't have to do any, because it is beneficial to our?
Right.
Buildings here.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be a percentage, like one percent, or half percent, or something the likes of that, but, I mean, it's not a big deal breaker, but again, I, I think I would be more concerned is as long as our risk is not there, you send us a bill, and we don't have the, the assessment money to pay for it, or it's short, then that's not, that's not hanging on our head of the past due bill.
Understood, it's not, I, I'm more than happy to get a, maybe a, an opinion from our council to satisfy that question.
Yes.
We are, we are the lender in the transaction, but the city is not, the city.
We are part of the transaction.
Yeah, the, the city is simply agreeing to remit the special assessment that the county remits to the city, further to the PACE lender.
I have no further questions.
You know, as long as there's, from what I understand here, as long as there's no actual cost to the City of Napoleon, I know from my time on the CIC, you know, there is a lot of those situations like Jennifer has talked about, where we just can't find someone to fill a particular location, and I, I think this is a big plus for the city personally, so I would be all in favor of that.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from our law director a little bit, Eric, Billy?
So it sounds like legislation would be necessary if, if you could move forward on this, so if you do, I would ask that you forward template legislation and also, obviously, the agreement for us to review, but that's up to council.
Thank you.
I love adding a tool, I really do, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I would certainly encourage council to move forward on this, you know, I, it kind of drives me crazy when I hear people say, why doesn't the city do this? Why, why don't they establish this business? Why don't they make that? It's not our job to start businesses, our job is to create the environment for businesses to grow and thrive, and I think this is, again, this is just another tool to help in that endeavor.
That building in particular is a great example to bring forward.
Yeah, and I think the Waldron's too, like I said, I just went through the former B and B, the other legal, and that desperately needs some improvements as well. And you know, I think about your guys' involvement in Efficiency Smart, and then with this as well, and other things that you're working on, like with the thermostats, I mean, it just really shows businesses in Napoleon's efforts to.
Can I ask if the property owner were to sell that property, does the new purchaser then take on this additional assessment?
They do.
Okay.
Within our, our closing package, the, the original borrower agrees to give notice to?
Okay.
The purchaser, we also file a, an affidavit of special assessment, so that's well within the public record, as well as its.
Are we able to provide any examples of some projects that have used this program?
Sure. Yeah, actually, I would say the headliner project of two thousand twenty-two was Jam Best Tire Fleet Service in Toledo, they purchased a twenty thousand dollar land bank property, brought under one roof, they're manufacturing and distributing, received a one-point-five million dollar PACE loan, three million dollar private financing, one million dollar Jobs Ohio financing, and another half a million dollar Jobs Ohio grant to bring forty jobs from Michigan to Lucas County, increase the energy efficiency of a former vacant building, and bring all of their operation under one roof, so it's a, better buildings Northwest Ohio has been a success of Northwest Ohio today.
Great. Have any other questions or comments?
I have our templated legislation, I'm more than happy to drop it off to you.
And the agreement, I'm guessing will come by email, or?
Yeah, so this is templated as a closing date of February, so, you know, a slight change, but essentially it's.
So and I think, and with the involvement in that program, did you say the city appoint it to seat on the board then as well?
Thank you.
David, yes.
Great. I want to make a motion to have the law director draft legislation.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Thank you, Jen and Josh, appreciate your time.
Still much progress.
I'm meeting with Andy tomorrow, I was thinking a little.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item K for discussion or action to approve the fire department to apply for the EMS training and equipment grant.
I, Council President, I will defer to Acting Chief Joel Fry on this one.
Welcome, sir.
Hi. This is just an annual grant, we apply for every year, we get a little bit of money to purchase some durable EMS equipment, sometimes it's small depending on, I believe it's how many tickets the post writes each year, so sometimes it's a lot of money and sometimes it's not, but we do utilize it to get some much-needed equipment when our equipment goes bad.
How much is a big check?
I think we've gotten up to like three thousand at times.
Three or thirty?
Three.
Thirty?
Yep, and then at times we get like three hundred, so it's just, it's up in there, but it's worth a attempt at, seeing what we can get.
Free money is good money.
All right.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Need a motion to approve.
Motion.
A second, sorry.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
That has been approved. Item K five, discussion or action to approve the City of Napoleon's commitment to AMP's GRIP grant application.
I will defer to the Finance Director on this one, and then fill in as necessary.
So what we're asking for is to direct law director to draft legislation to be a part of what's called AMP's RIP, GRIP, a grant application. This is a, an application that they, they did an initial paper to file with the Department of Energy, and the Department of Energy came back and said that they would, went to see a full-blown grant application, and then we're talking somewhere around fifty million dollars that they could be receiving. And then we're talking somewhere around $50 million that they could be receiving. And what this helps is it helps to make the grid more, a little more technology savvy and to make it more on-time and reliable. So we were asked to be a part of this and this would put Napoleon's name as part of that grant. Our risk at this point is, is that they would ask that we at least budget for next year to have our meter reading go to AMI, which is like a on-time reading instead of like now we read about every 30 days. This would be a daily read with that and it's a route that we should go to. There is more information coming in from AMP on this. We just, there was calls last week that Andy and I were a part of, but right now we're just asking that you proceed and have the Law Director enact the legislation. There are a few concerns that we do have on it, but so we're sort of, we could pump the brakes on this and if that's the case, we would pretty much ask you to say, I don't think it's in the best view of Napoleon to do that. But the timeframe for that in the packet is, is in there, is their submission for deadline for the full application would be March 17th. So by March 17th, they would like to have us have that resolution passed by council. So this would be part of the process of getting that moving forward to it.
Dave, go ahead.
Is this slightly tied in with the, the smart meters? Trying to make a system more reliable and you can, that way they can better read what's going on?
That's correct. Because like, for example, for just our own use of that, we, we, we have someone drive a vehicle around and get our electric and water use. And so if something happens today, but we just read it a week ago, we would not know that they are a high electric user or water user until the next time it's read. This would, the AMI system, which would, they would pay like 50% of our cost to institute the AMI system, would read that on a daily basis. So if we seen a home that had a large water use, which in one day, we can alert that person right away.
They can get a better handle on what's going on electricity-wise also.
Basically real-time reading.
Real-time reading, yes. And also for outages of electricity too, yes.
Yeah, okay.
But it goes beyond that because this is, also goes to the, the grid of what AMP has. So it's not just for Napoleon, but they feel to, for them to get a part of this grant or get the 50 million that we, the entities would have to invest in it too.
Yeah, but you see what I'm saying that it, how it would help also with the meter reading because if we have this metering this way and they have the smart amp or smart thermostat, they'll have a better idea of what they need in emergency situations quicker.
That's correct.
Yes.
I would say I, I'm in favor of the AMI, but it is quite costly.
Well, that's part of the.
Concern.
Ongoing discussion and concern.
Right, right.
That's why I'm asking that we continue on at this point because there's a little sticker shock that comes with that. And so is it truly right at the right price for that? The other discussion points that we had is, is the ownership of it. And that needs to be worked out in my mind before we would give it a final yes or no with that.
So the resolution is just to allow us to be sort of on the ground.
The resolution we're asking is, is to have.
With no obligation.
The Law Director to enact the legislation to bring it forward to you guys in two more weeks, which we would have more information on that to pass that, whether we would be a part of this grant application.
But at that point, then we would be beginning the process of being obligated to the.
That is correct.
Got it.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that's why Kevin said if we could get it started tonight, we would encourage you to pass it tonight on first reading. But we still have a little bit more homework to do on this before we feel comfortable enough to have you pass this, so.
It's not first read, it's just direct.
Direct the law director. First read would be in two weeks.
Okay, just make sure.
I appreciate it, Mary. I'm yes to direct the Law Director to bring forth legislation. But yeah, we have some more homework to do on this.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to have the Law Director draft legislation.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
All right. Okay, we'll go around the table here and start with Andy today.
Thank you, Council President. I was informed by our HR Director this morning that we have hired two individuals for our Electric Apprentice Program. And so we are moving forward with that. We should have one onboard March 6th and the other one March 20th. Is that correct? So that's good news. Civil service evening, tomorrow evening at St. Paul, they're gracious enough to allow us to use our facilities for some agility training. And then the certification of that list for the police patrolmen will take place as well. And lastly, for those of you traveling to Washington DC this weekend, safe travels and good luck. Thank you.
Hey, Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right. Dr. Dave?
Uh, nothing for me.
Ken?
It's a good thing to see the weatherman has cooperated with the quickly repaired street sweeper. We're finally getting rid of some of the last fall's leaves.
Right. Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay. Dan?
I have two items. Number one, apparently six of the seven committees of council are not meeting in February, but there is one that is. And we have a special meeting of the Safety and Human Resources Committee moved to this Thursday so we can accommodate some of the people going to Washington. And that's with the fire department and the townships. So that is our normal, regular February meeting that we've had and that will be this Thursday at 7 o'clock here. And I'm assuming we will have the fire personnel there to handle all the discussion. Is that a correct assumption?
Your head blank.
The, a future chief is smiling back there, so I'm assuming that is. Okay. And item two, this is a question I've received a couple of times over the last couple of weeks and I don't know if we have an answer to this question or if it's something I just missed. Is there a reason for the trail or the sidewalk, the new trail sidewalk that goes down into Rutter Park being blocked off? I've been telling people I do not know and that's came up twice. One gentleman asked me if it was because of ice and, well, the temperatures have been in the 40s and 50s, so I don't really know.
I, may I give an answer to that?
Yes, please.
I believe when they first opened it to foot traffic, there were a couple of people trying to make it a driveway and they put the barricade up right away.
That's exactly right. So it is open for the citizens to walk down there? Yes. Okay. So I think if we just make that known to the community that that is.
I turned around.
We just need a bunch of no-driving signs along.
Driving my, what, golf carts or something?
Council Mayor, we've had, we've had two vehicles use it in the front of our building. That's why there's cones in front now.
Oh, gee whiz. But yeah, they just wondered if it was blocked off for some reason, that they couldn't use it for a walking trail. So that was the questions that I had, so.
Judge Vayner's ballers will take them. We'll just take those.
Oh, yeah. That's a good thought.
I actually remember Chad saying.
I'm a cheat, it's intentional citation.
I remember Chad saying about two months ago that they were looking at ballers for that entrance. I think Mayor brought up people going down Jan's Road, continuing down that if it were icy.
Yeah.
And Chad brought up the ballers that they were looking into, so.
Okay, that, that's the only concern a couple of citizens had, so I wanted to pass that along. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Jen, if I read the paper right, we're going to see a lot more of you and a lot less of Brian. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to Monday nights in the City of Napoleon. Um, I talked, we're talking about our hallway and how to add some art to it. I talked to a local artist and she thought that, you know, if you put a painting up, there's always, you're going to have a lot of opinions and if you want to paint over it, then you're going to make, or put the first one kind of mad, which I'd never thought about. And she thought if you put a bunch of framed pictures up in different sizes, different kind of historic things, that might be the easiest way to, to have some things, you can change them around. So that may be a solution to, to what we do out there. I think that's a potential. Dr. Dave and I talked to him a little before the council meeting and I thought he had an interesting opinion. I don't know if you want to share or not what you can talk to us. Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor. Kind of like we have our Heartland values flowing opportunities, it, it looks very stately, it's larger. If we could get some vinyl signs like that, one that says Tree City USA, which Napoleon has had for several years, we could also get one that has Solar City because we were solar. If we have things like that, being larger like that, it just, it has a different stately air to it than just having a bunch of smaller picture frames that aren't, aren't a common theme. That talks about some of the history that we'd have for the City of Napoleon tying it in. I think you had both of them together, I think. Yeah, sure, why not? So, I didn't know, I, I know since we brought this up, people have been giving me, you want to use these pictures, you want to use these, and I haven't known what to say, but I think it's just going to be somebody just puts them, puts them in a frame and puts them up there and if you don't like them, they're easy to change, right? You know what, and there's no reason with today's technology, we could take some of those pictures that are older and make that a larger black and white. That would be a vinyl that could go up and I think that would be a better thing than just having a small frame by frame you have to look at. Something bigger would be better. Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking too. Sure. Okay. So, process continues, I guess. Sent Chad an email and got a lot of really good responses from him today. So I really appreciate all the, the staff responsiveness, I appreciate that, so. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ross?
I just want to congratulate Chief Bowen. Welcome to council and congratulations on a new position, so. That was all I had.
Okay, Lori?
I'll ditto that, Chief Bowen, soon to be. Then this, I just thought this as we were discussing tonight, for the 108 construction, have we talked about any sort of provision for the people that I see walking through that area, I assume going to work from the north side of 24 there? Will there be, I mean, it seems like that could be a big issue for.
Pedestrian path maintained?
Mm-hmm.
I can make a note of that.
Something, right.
Mr. Mayor? Or City Manager?
You're looking that way and thinking that has. Hey, Mr. Hayes, how are you?
Would there, would there be a possibility of the intercity transportation network being contacted about providing that with the closure of.
Great idea.
I will see what we can do there.
Especially with our city bus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good time. Because they do have, I do believe that they have buses available for public transportation without, without a fee made in charge.
One that's earmarked.
Yes.
Thank you. I will look into that.
At church, I always call. Uh-huh, no problem. Tell me the same thing, that's fine.
That's all for me.
All right. Molly?
Uh, nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. Kevin?
I just want to mention with tax season and we're getting more people rolling in for that and more questions, that we, our move to Rita has been somewhat smooth at this point, but we do have a lot of people coming in and asking questions or calling. There is some apprehensive when they come in. I just want to state that I myself filed my taxes for the City of Napoleon through the Rita, ritaohio.com. I was able to register, put in my information, which is really, really simple, and had my taxes completed in less than 15 minutes. I'm really positive that if, once people try it, they'll be fine to do that. You don't even have to like download your W2 information because they will have all of that eventually or they can match it. And even if people want to do it the old way, because we certainly had way too many people, I'll just say it that way, where they came in and said, here's my W2s, fill it, fill it out for me. There is a form that you can fill out and basically you got to just put your name and your address and, and just a little bit of information and you staple that to the corner of that form and they will fill it out for you. So that is still an option that's available to people, but I would highly encourage people to try it. It basically says this spot put box A, this spot put box 1, box 5, whatever. Do you need to have another W2? Click there, add another W2 and it'll calculate it for you. So it's, it's just a lot of questions, but again, and we encourage people to try it.
What is that website address?
RitaOhio.com.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. All right, and hey, we got around this whole table with nobody asking for executive session, so that's awesome.
So far.
So far.
So far.
All right. Let's see, move on to item L, approved payments, bills and financial reports.
I have a question on page three of the CAG disbursement.